Adrian N. Breitfelder, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a regular session of the City Council to be held on Monday, August 19th, 2024, at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a regular session of the Dubuque City Council for August 19th, 2024. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the sections of the agenda where public input is accepted. Input options during the live meeting include: In-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input on the item they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can log into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access code that appear on the broadcast and livestream and posted on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in the chat function, or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to during the appropriate section. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by a name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the City Clerk's Office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting. Attendance for the session is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Councilmembers Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Rousseau.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
And City Attorney Burwell.
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Kavanaugh, I will turn it over to you for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Adrian. I invite all who are able to please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I will note we do have an update to tonight's agenda. Item set for public hearing number three is pulled from the meeting. Next, we'll move on to presentations. We have Iowa 2024 Community of Character Award presentation.
Okay. And we are lucky enough to be joined by Scott Racker tonight. So Scott, I invite you to the podium, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Kavanaugh. I'm Scott Racker, Executive Director of the Robert D. and Billy Ray Center at Drake University, which for official purposes necessary is 2507 University Avenue in Des Moines. Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, city staff, and in fact, all of the citizens of Dubuque, it is a tremendous honor and pleasure for me to be with you tonight to present the 2024 Community of Character Award from the Robert D. and Billy Ray Center at Drake University. This organization was actually founded by former Governor Ray and the Iowa Sesquicentennial Commission as a lasting legacy of Iowa Sesquicentennial in 1996, of which Dubuque played an integral and important role. The vision of the legacy in Governor Ray's mind resulted in the mission of the organization, which was to recognize, enhance, and sustain the positive qualities of Iowans in order to promote civility through character development and ethical leadership. Governor Ray's promise, and one that we've seen in actualization in the last 27 years, is that when we individually and collectively operate with high character competencies and ethical leadership, that one of the outcomes of that is a heightened level of civility, from early childhood to the corporate, community, and public service arena. We began our work in 1997 with one 5th grade classroom in West Des Moines, Iowa, using the Six Pillars of Character, and we now serve over 8 million youth worldwide with the Character Council framework. Those Six Pillars of Character are trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and good citizenship. And we use those in the eye and action orientation. What can I, Scott Racker, do today to act in a capacity worthy of trust? What can I do to demonstrate respect? It's those Six Pillars that are the foundation of our Iowa Character Awards, where we identify 12 individuals or organizations each year to receive an Iowa Character Award for demonstrating those principles. We've done this for over 20 years, and each year, there is identified one community of character in our state. And this year, we're honored to recognize Dubuque. Quite candidly, it's a long time coming. I grew up in eastern Iowa in Waterloo, graduated from high school in the 1980s, and as difficult as things were in Waterloo in the late 70s and 80s, I don't think it even held the candle to the challenges that Dubuque faced. But Dubuque has been a community of resilience, of determination, of overcoming obstacles, of finding ways to work together despite your differences, the things that you can focus on as you're doing now in your current planning of what you can agree that you want to have, and then working together to achieve that. So if we would, I'd like to have us all take just a quick listen to the video that was presented in Des Moines for the banquet and on statewide TV by Fox on August 7th that discusses what Dubuque is all about as it comes to character.
Being named a community of character is not only humbling, but it's also energizing.
That was a really proud moment, actually. You know, I'm really proud of the work that we do here. I'm proud of this place that we are all creating together.
The commitment that the City of Dubuque has for its resident and constantly striving to be, as we say, a community of choice.
I think there's a lot that you can look back in our history of challenges and accomplishments that led to this intersection in time.
I've been in Dubuque since the 1980s as a young mom with four children. Those were very difficult days because Dubuque had the highest unemployment in the country at one point in time.
You couldn't find a part-time job as a high school kid because there so many people needed jobs.
There was a fear, you know, that Dubuque was dying.
I have seen so many times that we have come together.
Dubuque is a community that demonstrates how you can collaborate and work together to resolve challenging issues despite differences.
And it really shows how no one person can do it by themselves, but together as a community, we can really bring about transformational change.
We have a mantra that we always say, and it gets a little old around here, but it's very, very true. It's people, planning, and partnerships.
When we, as a school district, have any kind of topic that we're working on, many different entities from the city are at the table saying, how can we help you resolve that?
Dubuque is home to literally one of two nonprofit casinos in America. The city has a direct relationship with the casino, where you take one-third of the profits come directly into the city's coffers, another third goes directly to nonprofits throughout the community, and another third goes to development of city-owned land.
I was fortunate to be involved in riverfront redevelopment, where we were able to raise $188 million to redesign our riverfront. I was involved with the National Mississippi River Museum and Aquarium, which is the largest river interpretive center in America.
We get economic development again, working with the workforce themselves. You know, the actual employers are involved in this discussion. We get city involved, we get county involved, we get the state of Iowa involved, and we're able to access funding and resources.
Thank you for recognizing our community, for all the great qualities that we have, and that we're excited to keep doing and approving on in the future years.
This award isn't just for the city of Dubuque. It is for everyone who lives here and has been a part of making this city the beautiful city that it is and the city of character that it is today.
I just can't wait for the great things that are in store for our community, and I can't wait to welcome you back because we got a show coming.
I just want to say thank you to the Ray Center for this prestigious honor. We truly are honored by this in the city of Dubuque, and we will continue to do our very best to be a community of character.
Congratulations to all of the citizens of Dubuque on exemplifying what a community of character looks like.
Mayor Kavanaugh, on behalf of the Robert D. and Billy Ray Center and our National Board of Directors, it is my distinct honor and privilege to present to you, on behalf of all the citizens of Dubuque, the 2024 Community of Character Award, first as an acknowledgement for the great work that's been done here in Dubuque, and second as inspiration for communities across the country to look at best practices of how we get things done better together. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, Scott, as you sit back down here, you can stay there, either way. I just want to make sure that I take a moment to say thank you to the Robert D. and Billy Ray Center for this very prestigious honor. I think Senator Yocum said it best, and that this isn't just for the city of Dubuque, this is for everybody. This is for everybody who lives here. So I want to thank the community, the entire community, for having the character that we do and for making us a community of character. It's not easy work. It's challenging. We're a family, and we have to, you know, sometimes that comes with its challenges too, but we are doing some really good things here. And I will also agree with Mr. Alex Dixon that, just wait, there's some great stuff coming still. So thank you very much for being here. We appreciate it.
Congratulations to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Adrian, we can move on.
We'll move on to proclamations. Our proclamation this evening is the University of Dubuque Aviation Day.
Okay. And I'd like to welcome for the first time to the podium President Travis Frampton. And I believe you brought some friends with you today, too.
I did. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Travis Frampton, the President of the University of Dubuque. And I brought some representatives from the aviation program at the university, two alumni, the board chair, and the director of the program will be with me receiving this honor. But wanted to just take a moment to say thank you for the recognition that you are showing the university. As I became more interested in the university, one of the programs that sort of stood out in my mind was our aviation program. It's one of the few programs that has been around as long as it has. We're celebrating our 50th year this year, and so it's a point of great pride of the university. And a lot of that has to do with the faculty, the staff, the students, and the graduates of this program that has built a reputation that is not just local, but regional and also on a national level. So we just want to say thank you to the community here in Dubuque. A program like this takes great partnerships, as you all know more than I do at this point. But thank you to the council, to you, Mayor, and to the airport for the partnerships and making sure that this is a program that will continue on in the future for the next 50 years. Thank you.
Well, thank you, President Frampton, and everyone from the University of Dubuque. You know, you said this is a point of pride for you as a university, but it's a point of pride for the entire community of Dubuque. So thank you very much for all the work that you do and for doing it for 50 years. So City of Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas the University of Dubuque's history of leadership, innovation, and change in service to church and world began in autumn of 1852, when Dutch immigrant the Reverend Adrian Van Vlees started tutoring two brothers for ministry, thus forming the Van Vlees School to serve the growing population of immigrants on the American frontier. And whereas these immigrant populations continued arriving in the area that would become known as Dubuque, the key city of Iowa, to study at the Van Vlees School. First, there were two students, then nine, then 17, and in 1912, the first women's students were welcomed. And whereas in 1920, a new charter was issued, officially renaming the institution as the University of Dubuque, which would develop into a university with both a college and a seminary. And whereas, the university would continue to expand physically and programmatically, adding courses in education, psychology, English, and the sciences. And whereas, in 1974, the Department of Aviation was formed, initially supported by two planes. And whereas, we acknowledge and celebrate the University of Dubuque's 50 years of fostering academic and professional skills that have enabled their aviation graduates now numbering over 1,300 for success in all segments of the aviation industry, including various branches of the military. And whereas, August 19th marks Orville Wright's birthday, and in 1939, President Franklin Delano Roosevelt issued a presidential proclamation designating this day as National Aviation Day. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the 19th of August 2024 as the University of Dubuque Aviation Day. Let's give him a hand. All right. Go on to the next items, Adrian.
We'll now move on to consent items. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the consent items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Please state the item you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration. And consent items can be found on pages 2 through 4 of the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. Do we have anyone here in chambers who would like to remove any of the consent items for separate discussion this evening? I see no one here. We have anyone virtually, Corey?
We do not.
Thank you very much.
No input.
All right, nothing from the City Clerk's Office. Back to the table then.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the consent items as recommended.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Resnick, second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousseau.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
We will move on to boards and commissions. We have applicant review for the Historic Preservation Commission, the Housing Commission, Housing Trust Fund Advisory Committee, Library Board of Trustees, and Long Range Planning Advisory Commission.
All right, thank you, Adrian. So our first commission this evening is the Historic Preservation Commission. There are two three-year terms through July 1st, 2027, and we have three applicants: Bill Doyle, Cole Hansen, and Heidi Pettit. Do we have anyone here to speak to any of those applications this evening? Seeing no one here, we'll move on then to, and nothing virtually, Corey, thank you. Move on to the Housing Commission. We have two three-year terms through August 17th, 2027, and two applicants, Ross James and Renee Kehoe. Do we have anyone here to speak to those applications? Yeah, please, come on up. If you could just identify who you are and your address is, we appreciate it.
Ross James, 2741 Muscatine. I was put on the, voted on the commission to fill a previous unfulfilled term. During that time, we had a few meetings we couldn't have because of some legal issues that happened with that. So I'm just asking that I be reappointed. I feel I have a lot of work left to do, and I'd be interested to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ross. All right, any other input on these? Okay, moving on then to the Housing Trust Fund Advisory Committee. Two three-year terms through August 17th, 2027, and two applicants, Michelle Beckwar and Jim Holes. Do we have anyone here to address us on these applications? Seeing no one. Thank you, Corey. All right. Moving on then to the Library Board of Trustees. We have one four-year term through July 1st, 2028, and one applicant, Tom Brennan. Do we have anyone here to address us on this? Yes, please, come on up.
Tom Brennan, 3275 Cider Ridge. I think there's two things at play here. One is, why would I want to do something like this? I've never done anything like this before. I came home from a particular place, I won't tell you where, in the city, and I was venting online social media about what I disliked about how it was run. And I had this epiphany after I made this post, that I had turned into one of these people that I don't like. I run a volunteer organization, I pastor a church. I don't like people who complain and never offer a solution. And it occurred to me that I had become one of those people, that I had become pretty good about complaining about the things I don't like without ever coming with a solution. So that motivated me to say, well, what could I do? I'm not going to run for office. It's not my style. So I came eventually to the point of looking at city boards, what would work, what would fit with me, and that is the second thing that bears here, which is why I choose to ask to serve with the library. I love books. I own thousands of books. I've read thousands of books. I've taken my children to the library hundreds and hundreds of times. I've written books. I don't know library administration, but I know books, and it would fit with my schedule and it would fit with who I am.
Well, Tom, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
For addressing us. Okay. Anyone else? All right, and moving on to the Long Range Planning Advisory Commission. We have one three-year term through July 1st, 2027, and one applicant, Beth McGrath. Anyone here to address us on this application? And seeing no one, then we can move along to the next items, please, Adrian.
Next are public hearings. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input for the public hearing you would like to speak to and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function and state your question, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Public hearing number one is 8301 Seiple Court rezoning request.
Mayor.
Ms. Jones.
I move to receive and file the communications and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed with suspension.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Sprank. Wally, please.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Council. The request before you tonight is to rezone a property from Commercial Service and Wholesale District, a C3 general commercial located at 8301 Seiple Court. The subject property is about 0.44 acre lot and area, basically 19,000 square feet. And on this lot is an improved metal warehouse, 6,000 square foot. And it was part of a larger mini warehousing development and just recently that's been platted off. So the warehouse building is separate from the mini warehousing property. And the current property owner, Ron Briner, is working with a potential client or acumen of the structure who would like to move their business to Dubuque. And as part of that discussion, they talked about, oh, can maybe have a residential unit in the building. Well, in this commercial service district, residential is not allowed on the first floor, so they're looking at rezoning to a C3 district, which will allow residential use on the upper floor. Since then, he's looked into like the building code requirements, some things that are associated with it. So there is some question whether or not he still wants to move forward with having a residential above the top floor, but he would like to move forward with the rezoning because it provides more of an opportunity, additional uses at that location. The zoning advisory commission did hold a public hearing, and during that public hearing, Mr. Briner did indicate what I just explained to you with regards to the proposed change from not having residential on the upper floor, but that's not ruled out, that could happen in the future. And at the public hearing, there were a lot of conversations with regards to other uses for the property, what it could be used for, the traffic demand that's associated with the property. It is located off of Seiple Road on a Seiple Court, which is a local street. The type of use and the operation isn't a high-traffic generator or volume. The property just right next door was just recently developed in a mini warehousing development for the project. At the public hearing, there was no one outspoken opposition. We did not receive any neighbors that are in opposition to the request. Staff went over the characteristics of the site, including all the adjacent land uses, the transportation requirements, zoning, and we identified the differences between CS and C3 zoning at the location. The commissioners really didn't have any questions or comments with regards to it. So by a vote of five to zero, the zoning advisory commission recommends that the City Council approve the request, and a submajority vote is needed for City Council approval. That's all I have.
All right, thank you very much, Wally. Before I read this to, Eric, could you take the, flip the switch to get us off the screens here up on the desk, please? Thank you. We are in a public hearing to consider the City Council approve a request from Rob Briner, Ron Briner, apologize, to rezone property located at 8301 Seiple Court from CS Commercial Service to Wholesale to C3 General Commercial, and the zoning advisory commission is recommending approval. Do we have anyone here to address us on this item this evening? I see no one here in chambers, anyone virtually?
No.
Thank you, Corey.
No input.
Thank you, Adrian. All right, back to us then for discussion. Seeing none. Okay. Motion here is to receive and file, waive the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousseau.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
And we'll file a consideration and pass it to the ordinance.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Jones, second by Sprank. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousseau.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Public hearing number two is Peru Road rezoning request.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousseau.
I move to receive and file, and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended. Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Rousseau and a second by Wethel. Wally, please.
Yes, once again, good evening, Mayor and City Council. This request is a little bit more straightforward. The property zoned R3C has a condition. That C means there's a condition that's placed on the property. And back in 1992, a condition was placed on these lots, there's about 12 of them that are located on Peru Road, that there will be only one access permitted from Peru Road at the location. And when we researched the history of that, why that condition was placed on there, it was a last-minute add-on. When you go through the minutes, it just says, at the last minute, there was a friendly amendment that one of the commissioners said, can we just limit to one access to Peru Road? Well, what's happened is, we have 12 lots, two of them have been developed on, but we have 10 other lots just sitting there vacant. And they come into our office quite often saying, hey, I'd like to develop this, can I get access to Peru Road? Well, there's already one access that's already been granted to the property. So we're working with the current property owner, Zorro, who's looking at removing that condition and opening the opportunity to have additional access. As part of that access requirement, it will go through our SUDAS requirements, which back in 92, we didn't really have a lot of standards with regards to the driveway access spacing and requirements that we do nowadays. So with that approval, it would just remove that condition. So same amount of uses, it's just that the access to Peru Road would be allowed. We are rezoning two other properties that are not owned by Zorro as part of this. At the public hearing, we did have one individual reach out to us prior to the hearing, went some information out, just saying what's going on. We explained the condition to remove the access, they're perfectly fine with it. And then at the public hearing, we had one of the family's members came up and said, what's going on? What's with my property? They already have access, they're located on Walker Street for the property. And once it was explained to them what the requirement was, they had no objection to the rezoning. The reason why we do that is, we don't want to have two little pieces of an R3C sitting out there that says you don't have access to Peru Road when one of the properties doesn't have access to Peru already. So it's really just to clean up. This is a county subdivision that was annexed into the city, there are substandard streets out there, there's a lot of things for improvement-wise, and this is just opening the property up for development for some residential housing on the property. So that's all I have, unless you guys have any questions. But I guess I should let you know that the zoning advisory commission by a vote of five to zero is recommending approval of the rezoning, which is basically removing that condition, and a submajority vote is all that's needed to the council.
All right, thank you, Wally. We are in a public hearing to consider a request from Zorro Investments LLC to rezone property located at Peru Road from R3C moderate-density multifamily residential with conditions to R3 moderate-density multifamily residential, and the zoning advisory commission is recommending approval. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one here, anything virtually, Corey?
No.
No input.
Thank you, Adrian. All right, back to the table then for any discussion. So.
I have a question for you, Wally. The SUDAS requirements, is that where it would make sure that any driveway is safe, that there's good sight and everything, and there's no concerns about unsafe access to the street?
Yeah, so prior to us going before the zoning advisory commission, we worked with our engineering department to discuss, because we don't want to remove a condition if it's not feasible to allow them to have a driveway location, correct? are located on Peru Road, that there will be only one access permitted from Peru Road at the location. And when we researched the history of that, why that condition was placed on there, it was, it was a last-minute add-on. When you go through the minutes, it just says, at the last minute, there was a friendly amendment that one of the commissioners said, can we just limit to one access to Peru Road? Well, what's happened is, we have 12 lots, two of them have been developed on, but we have 10 other lots just sitting there vacant. And they come into our office quite often saying, hey, I'd like to develop this, can I get access to Peru Road? Well, there's already one access that's already been granted to the property. So we're working with the current property owners, Zorro, who's looking at removing that condition and opening the opportunity to have additional access. As part of that access requirement, it will go through our SUDAS requirements, which back in 92, we didn't really have a lot of standards with regards to the driveway access spacing requirements that we do nowadays. So with that approval, it would just remove that condition. So same amount of uses, it's just that the access to Peru Road would be allowed. We are rezoning two other properties that are not, are not owned by Zorro as part of this. At the public hearing, we did have one individual reach out to us prior to the hearing, we sent the information out, just saying what's going on. We explained the condition to remove the, the access, they're perfectly fine with it. And then at the public hearing, we had, one of the family's members came up and said, what's going on? What's with my property? They already have access, they're located on Walker Street for the property. And once it was explained to them what the requirement was, they had no objection to the rezoning. The reason why we do that is, we don't want to have two little pieces of an R3C sitting out there that says you don't have access to Peru Road when one of the properties doesn't have access to Peru already. So it's really just to clean up. This is a county subdivision that was annexed into the city, there are substandard streets out there, there's a lot of things for improvement-wise, and this is just opening the property up for development, for some residential housing on the property. So that's all I have, unless you guys have any questions. But I guess I should let you know that the zoning advisory commission by a vote of five to zero is recommending approval of the rezoning, which is basically removing that condition. And a supplemental majority vote is all that's needed to the council.
All right, thank you, Wally. We are in a public hearing to consider a request from Zorro Investments LLC to rezone property located at Peru Road from R3C moderate-density multifamily residential with conditions to R3 moderate-density multifamily residential. And the zoning advisory commission is recommending approval. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one here, anything virtually, Cory?
No.
Thank you.
No input.
Thank you, Adrian. All right, back to the table then for any discussion.
I have a question for you, Wally. The SUDAS requirements, is that where it would make sure that any driveway is safe, that there's good sight and everything and there's no concerns about unsafe access to the street?
Yeah, so prior to us going before the zoning advisory commission, we worked with our engineering department to discuss, because we don't want to remove a condition if it's not feasible to allow them to have a driveway location, correct? So yes, the SUDAS requirements, looking at the spacing between Walker Street and the other adjoining street where they intersect into Peru Road, there is adequate spacing to have additional driveway accesses to the property. The other thing that's with the property I just wanted to mention is, it's an unimproved subdivision that was annexed into the city. So we have an unimproved alley right away, it's platted, no alley. We have Excelsior Street, which is unimproved, platted 50-foot right away, no pavement or anything associated with it. So as you think about, when they develop this, there's some improvements they have to do in order to make it happen. And some of that's like actually putting an entire street in for a couple lots is sometimes not financially feasible, but if they get access off Peru Road, it makes that property a little bit more marketable. And plus, once, once again, it's been sitting there vacant for many years, we have several lots. Actually Habitat for Humanity had these lots for a little bit too, looking at trying to make a development and they couldn't make a go of it. So hopefully by removing this restriction, it'll open it up for, for the development, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Sprank.
Yeah, I'm definitely going to support this because we, we want some, we want more housing and this is a no-brainer to me, it makes sense, it's a very busy road, people will like it, I'm sure all the setbacks will be fine, so I'm definitely in support of this.
Mr. Sprank. Any others? Okay. Motion here is to receive and file, waive the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Seven zero.
Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Rousell, second by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
It's a seven zero.
Public hearing number three is 405, 575 and 595 Cedar Cross Road rezoning request.
Before a motion is made on this, I want to point out something for the council's attention. There are two ordinances to choose from here. One of them has, is specific to one property and one of them is specific to several properties. So I just wanted to make sure you point that out because you'll need to make a motion on a specific ordinance.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Regarding the zoning advisory commission's recommended ordinance, which I think is option two, I move that we receive and file the communications and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which is to be finally passed be suspended.
Second.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Wethel. Just for clarification, Mr. Jones, the ordinance that you are choosing from right now is the one, is the first one that is listed on the agenda.
On 595 Cedar Cross Road only.
Okay, all right, so that's clear for, for the record for the city clerk. Okay, all right, thank you very much. We got a motion by Jones, second by Wethel. Wally, please.
Yes, thank you for taking that motion, because I'm going to explain a really long, convoluted process to be able to address this. First off, the request to rezone property from R1 single-family residential to CS Commercial Service and Wholesale District. I have had conversations with the property owner. And as part of the rezoning process, you have two motions there before you. One where the, rezone all the properties as Commercial Service and the zoning advisory commission recommend denial for that, which would force a supplemental majority vote before the city council. The other one was, they had a separate motion where they just rezoned one property, that vote was four-one and it takes a supplemental majority vote. Since that meeting, had an opportunity to speak with the property owners about maybe withdrawing the portion of those two remaining properties that are not being recommended to be rezoned, to come back and have a conversation to the zoning advisory commission. And I know the, the property owners are in communication, they're reaching out to the two adjoining property owners with opportunities to maybe do a conditional rezoning, remove some additional things and have additional conversations. So with the motion that you made before, it makes it a little bit cleaner at the end instead of me having to try to explain a lot of different things. That being said, I'd like to go through the presentation because there's a lot going on with this property, so. The map that you have before you shows the three properties in question. 595 is the corner property on Nightingale Lane and Cedar Cross Road, that is, that is the one that the zoning advisory commission made a separate motion on, is recommending approval to be rezoned. 405 and 575 are the other two remaining properties that were recommended not to be rezoned at this time. I just want to provide information, we do notify everyone within 200 feet, so everything that's shaded in, in the transparent yellow and the dark yellow, all these property owners receive notices from our property notifying the request of the rezoning. The project consists of those three properties that are mentioned up there, there's one approved with a detached garage, one's an undeveloped vacant lot, one has a single-family residence on it. And historically, these properties have been rezoned, single-family and duplexes over time. And then when we look at these developments and everything, we're looking at the existing street roadway or network connection for it. So Nightingale Lane is an unimproved county standard roadway, and that was brought into the city, and it provides access to the Dubuque Sports Complex. And people may or may not be aware, but the Dubuque Sports Complex is actually located in the county, it's not located in our corporate limits. Our corporate limits ends at the old ice plant for that, for that property. So going on all those adjacent land uses, you know, we have a mix of residential and commercial that bore along each side of that, but we also have a daycare. ABC Learning Center had to get a conditional use from it through the zoning board of adjustment several years ago, and it's a great facility. The, the ice plant is no longer in operation, but we have a mobile home park, we have various commercial buildings and single-family residences that located in this area. There's adequate utilities to service the site, you know, environmental, the property is largely unimproved, but it contains some mature trees and shrubs. But we will require a site plan review for anything that gets placed on these properties, that will go through the development review team process in order to ensure that we're not having impacts of stormwater runoff. I know there's one question that was brought up on one of the letters that were included in the packet. And then also, we look at those traffic patterns, which actually gets involved with a future capital improvement program request in the, in the five-year up to 2027. There are plans to improve Cedar Cross Road with regards to a right-turn lane on a Nightingale Lane. If you look at Cedar Cross Road, it's pretty much improved all the way up to Birching and Cooley, and then the curb and gutter kind of disappears and it goes to no curb and gutter, and then it picks back up to curb and gutter when you get further down to Casey's and some of those other properties. So that plan has been in the CIP for several years and off and on, depending on funding situations, but there is a plan in order to look at some of the turn lane improvements just because of the sheer amount of traffic that's coming from the sports complex, especially during the baseball and softball season. This is just a list of the permitted uses, just showing the comparison between the Commercial Service and the R1 Single Family Residential. Public input, we did receive two letters, three letters actually submitted in opposition to the request. One was from Asani Ronuck, Carol Moss, and Jesse and Jessica Kemp. Both, all those are included in your packet. And then at the public hearing, we did have speakers from Mike Reinert, he lives at 401 Cedar Cross Road. His property is directly adjacent to Birching and Cooley, but he would be surrounded if rezoned by commercial on all three sides. Jason Moss spoke on behalf of his mother, who owns the property at 3095, she's directly adjacent to the property. And then a John Hoist, who lives on Nightingale Lane. So at that, at that meeting, the zoning advisory commission did make two, two motions, but as I mentioned before, the applicant's asking to withdraw the request for the rezoning for the two properties and just move forward with the 595 rezoning request, which is the motion that you have on the floor right now before you. If you go through that process, what would happen is, the other two properties would then go back to the zoning advisory commission, we'd have them review them again, make a recommendation, then come back before the council if they can come to a conclusion or an agreement maybe for some of the rezoning. I do like to note that we did have a rezoning request of the property before the zoning advisory commission for three 12plexes on this property. When that came through, the zoning advisory commission reviewed those and then recommended denial of those due to some impacts to the adjoining properties, and then that property owner did choose not to come before the city council. So you guys did not hear that request. But this property is a little bit unique in the fact that it's, it's commercial, there's single-family development, there's a former ice plant, there's a daycare center, there's a mobile home park, just a big mishmash of changing of, of the neighborhood. And there's quite a bit of discussion at the zoning advisory commission about, well, does anyone want to buy this and build a single-family home on the site? And that was questionable. I know the applicants are here, they talked about marketing the property for quite a few things. The other thing is the unknown of when is Cedar Cross Road going to be improved? So there's just a lot of things that are involved with the property at this time. So I'll just go with the second motion then. So by a vote of four to one, the zoning advisory commission recommends city council approve the rezoning of 595 Cedar Cross Road, our, from R1 Single Family Residential to CS Commercial Service and Wholesale, and a supplemental majority vote is needed for the city council to approve that rezoning request. And that's all I have. I think we do have some people present that would like to speak, and then, like I said, the applicant is here also, if you have any questions.
Great, thank you, Wally. We are in a public hearing to consider amending Title 16 of the City of Dubuque Code of Ordinances Unified Development Code by reclassifying herein after described property located at 595 Cedar Cross Road from R1 Single Family Residential District to CS Commercial Services and Wholesale District. Do we have anyone here to address us on this item this evening? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually?
We do not.
Okay.
Carol Moss of 3095 Nightingale Lane did submit written input to the city council that has been forwarded to the city council and uploaded with the agenda item.
All right, thank you very much, Adrian. All right, last call before I take it back to the table, there will be no other public input after this. Okay? All right, back to us then for discussion. Yeah, Mr. Jones.
So are you looking for us to pass this motion tonight, or would you like it to be kicked back to the commission for additional negotiation and discussion?
So I know the applicants are looking forward to having the property at 595 rezoned, and that's recommended by the zoning advisory commission. They do have a tenant that would like to purchase that and make improvements to it right now. So I would say the applicant is, would like you to move forward and approve that rezoning tonight. The other two, we're just withdrawing them from the request, and we're going to take to the zoning advisory commission, which helps clean up a lot of motions and processes that you'd have to go through. So look in the future for another rezoning request to come back for the two remaining properties that are not part of that, part of that discussion, so.
Mr. Resnick, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. And I appreciate your comment about being a mishmash of change out there, and if anybody drives out of Cedar Cross Road, you got to say, what's going on here? There's so many things going on. I really feel that we're kind of letting our R1 people down with all the different things that are going on out there. I, you know, drove past there, it's a big property, change lane isn't, you know, you know, it's going to take up some property, but there's a big property there. The other thing about 595 Cedar Cross Road, if you go on Google Maps and you check this out, there's a for sale sign, and you mentioned that they've been trying, trying to sell for sale, and it says, "Commercial Potential." Isn't this rated, isn't this R1?
It is zoned R1 at this time, yes.
Okay, I'm, I was just surprised to see that it's already their commercial potential. Anyway, I really feel that, because if you look also in this area, there is a block of residences, the nice homes, nice people, I'm sure, and you're right, they've been chipping away at what's going on out there. I, I really think we have to get our act together about what Cedar Cross Road going to be. And, you know, I know this has happened over many, many years, but, you know, if you take away 595 from that block of homes and in that neighborhood on Nightingale, I think that's a, a serious takeaway from their, from their life, their life experience on Nightingale. I mean, every, as soon as you turn right or left, of course, it's commercial and, and, you know, busy road. But for right now, it might be, except for, you know, all the traffic going to the park, you know, a, a nice place to raise a family. I just don't know how much chipper away we're going to do, and so I think we ought to really seriously think about this. Now, they said they're currently in Airbnb, and otherwise it's not, it's not occupied?
Would you like the applicant to have an opportunity to address that question?
Well, if you, that'd be fine with me.
I'm okay with that, yeah.
You're okay?
Yeah.
Do you want?
Yeah. Yeah, and if you would just name an address too, just since you'll be speaking and to be able to answer the question, thank you.
The current status of the property, if I can.
Okay, Julie Murfield, 10713 Cottingham Road, Piasta. So it's currently residential, we've been trying to sell it residential for quite some time. So the dilemma is, because of course we know that it's potentially going to have that turning lane in that front yard, we can't get a person that wants to put their family there. Because in good conscience, I can't have people looking at this home and not say, hey, this is a potential, they're going to take away your front yard. And we've shown it to easily 10, probably closer to 15 families who are, you know, again, like it, they understand how much commercial is there, but the minute I have to say, okay, well, the city might take a good portion of their front yard, you know, they're out. I can't say with, that's 100% why they're, they're out, but I know it would be a factor for me. So we, we've tried the residential route, we've had several families come through, and again, the minute they hear about the turning, they don't mind the current traffic, because obviously that, you know, goes without saying, especially if you're a Dubuqueer, you know, to get to the sports complex. But the fact that that turning lane is, it's just eliminated all of our options, so, you know, it's not residential appeal because we've tried that, ad nauseam actually. So we're just kind of fit to be tied. I can appreciate the people that live there long-term, but at the same token, this is a little arterial, whatever mini arterial that this, this is what Cedar Cross is. You know, it, it should come as no surprise, you know, it's saving that one little corner isn't really saving anything because no one resides there, we can't get anybody to buy it. It's been in my husband's family for over, I don't even know, 70 years, they've owned this whole property. So, you know, we just, we now we have somebody actually interested it, should it go through successfully, and he just wants to put an insurance office in there. So it's nothing obtrusive, it's, you know, nothing obscene traffic-wise, and, and I, we don't know what else to do with it, because residentially, we've, we've proven the fact that it's not marketable. And, you know, we're more than happy to pull the other two off the table just so we can communicate and, and work with whomever, because we love to do that. But as far as 595 goes, we just, you know, we just don't know what else to do, and we can't not tell people that might be a turning lane, because that, that would be awful to discover that later on. So, so anyway, that's just our current dilemma, I guess is the best way to say it.
What's the current use of the property?
Oh, so currently, yeah, we are operating it as an A B and B, and we, you know, we're literally booked every weekend, so, I mean, that has been excess, success, but, you know, at the same token, it's not the business we wanted to get into, and we didn't want long-term renters, and, you know, trust me, we've been through the gamut, because we've done that too, and we just, we saw the opportunity and somebody presented it, you know, as commercial use, and we said, well, that would be fabulous, and then we can move on, and, you know, so that's where it's at.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Resnick?
Thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Julie, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, actually, Mr. Resnick, are you, are you done? Did you have anything else?
Well, I think she has some great points, I thought I brought up some great points, as well as the people who live in that neighborhood have, I'm sure you've read their, what they have talked about. Just look at that picture up there, and it's a, it's a neighborhood right now. And out of all that area, it's the long Cedar Cross Road. I mean, by the time you're all the way through it, and then there's some nice, you know, it's a more residential. But in this area, I just think we need to support them in a special way. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Farber.
think it will be unobtrusive. I think it will be just part of the mosaic on Cedar Cross Road. And wish them well. So I will support this.
Thank you, Ms. Farber. Ms. Russell, yeah.
I'm looking at the, the traffic aspect, as the people go down to the sports complex. Because I live over by the soccer complex, and I know how busy that can be. And it seems to me that that corner, as a commercial space, could provide a nice buffer between the traffic that's going up and around the corner, and whatever's to the other side of it. So I'm in support of making that change.
Thank you, Ms. Russell.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
I touched that a little while ago. We, we got this Community of Character Award. And I appreciate your character, being honest with potential buyers about that potential turning lane that may or may not happen in our, you know, foreseeable future. I think this is a good proposal, and it doesn't harm the character of the neighborhood much. We're talking about a small insurance office that is not going to generate much more traffic or fuss than most residences. So I'm going to support this.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any others? So, Wally, there's, there's one concern that I have, and I'd just love to hear your thoughts about it. I kind of have some ideas of my own, but I'd love to hear yours. And it's Ms. Moss's property at 3095. You know, we don't run into this situation all that often, where we're sort of enveloping a property right there with commercial around it. And it's CS commercial. I mean, I'd feel really differently about the situation if we were talking about C3 commercial, but we're not. And, but still, it, you know, she's kind of on an island there. And I know that sometimes, you know, we've talked about rezonings. We had one recently, actually, where we rezoned to a, an area where there were houses that were sort of stuck on their own little island, but they were residential units in the midst of other residential units, essentially. And this is a little bit different. Is this, you know, I mean, I know the zoning advisory commission is recommending this, but at the same time, when you put a house on an island like that in that little way, even though it is buffered by that other part of the property that you're going to go back to the drawing board on, I'd just love to hear your comments on this.
Yeah. So the commission had a long discussion about that. They said, this is really simple. If 401 and Cedar Cross and 3095 all want to zone a CS, Alvin said, no problem. Then we rezoned that entire area to CS, commercial service. They do understand the concerns of the neighbors. Hence the reason why they weren't recommending approval, the rezoning of the entire property. But they do see the, the impact of the 595 being on that corner and the busy, the busy intersection, the future improvements that'll happen with the Cedar Cross Road with regards to it. There, I remember when we came through with the multifamily residential development, there was discussion about screening and putting up fences and everything associated with that. I think the best thing about this is that we have a property owner that's willing to go talk to the other property owners and have a conversation to decide what works best for them. And they may come to an agreement, they may not come to an agreement. But it's, it's an opportunity where they're actually making the decision themselves, as opposed to me telling them, like, I think this is what would be the best, or a zoning advisory commission, especially when we have a neighborhood like this being laid out. It's, it's very unusual. I do see it very, being very difficult to be developed, someone to purchase the property who would want to build a single-family home in here, especially with the investment, with the amount of traffic that's coming from the sports complex, the future improvement of Cedar Cross Road, and just seeing the nature of the area and how it's, it's changed over time. But I do have concerns about 3095 and 401 just being isolated, sitting out there. So that's why I'm very appreciative of the Murfields taking the time, let's withdraw our application, let's go have a conversation with them. Are there certain uses that we'd like to strike from the, from the property? Is there some other thing we come to an agreement? Is there some screening requirement? And they may not arrive at anything. We might come back and say, okay, it's going to remain as R1, single-family residential. So.
That's helpful for me, I think, because those are some of the considerations. It's a really unique property. I mean, just the whole situation. And I'm sure I don't need to tell you that, Ms. Murfeld, the uniqueness of the challenge that you have here. And, and I can appreciate, and let me just reiterate what Mr. Jones said too, about just the character of this whole thing. This, the tenor of this entire discussion is so civil and respectful, and I sincerely appreciate that. I think that's, that's a great way to be able to do this with rezoning. This can get, this can get contentious at times. And I'm really glad to see that we are working really hard to communicate with each other, and the zoning advisory commission is having a good conversation about it. I appreciate the conversation we're having here, too. So I think that's good. You know, where I'm landing on this is a little more what Ms. Russell said, actually, in that with all the improvements coming on Cedar Cross Road eventually, and we don't know exactly what all of this looks like yet, but I am, I am glad that we're looking at that in the future. I think it's necessary, kind of getting to Mr. Resnick's point. We do need to do some work in this area, and I think figuring that out is going to be really important. But with the improvements coming, there, there's going to be some interesting buffering that needs to occur there between commercial and residential properties in some ways. And honestly, I think that CS is probably the best direction to go at this right now, considering the potential changes down the road, considering the amount of traffic that's coming there now. And then especially since the considered use as of right now is, is a pretty low-impact business. I think it makes sense. So I do, I do plan to support it. I am concerned that we, I hope that as we go forward, we can all keep in mind the things you just pointed out, Wally, because I don't want to put residential homeowners just on their own islands in these, in this spot. I think it's really important that we are careful about that. But I do think in this case, the, the sort of compromise that we've come to here seems to be the best in the, in the current situation. So I think that's good. Okay. Seeing no further discussion or questions, the motion here on the table is to receive and file, waive the three readings, and specific to the ordinance listed first on the agenda that is related to 595 Cedar Cross Road. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
No.
That motion passes six to one.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Jones, second by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
No.
Motion passes six to one.
Public hearing number four is Old Mill Road Lift Station and Force Main Project, Phase One Public Hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Move to receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second by Farber.
Second by Jones, second by Farber. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. City Engineer Gus Sehoyes is recommending City Council approve the plan specifications form of contract, an estimated cost of $18,720,314.19 for the Old Mill Road Lift Station and Force Main Project, Phase One, through the adoption of the attached resolution. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request Mayor and City Council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider approval of plan specifications form of contract and estimated cost for the Old Mill Lift Station and Force Main Project, Phase One. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address this on this item? Seeing no one? Anyone virtually?
No input.
Thank you very much, Adrian. All right, back to the table then for any discussion. Seeing and hearing none. Motion here is to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number five is hold public hearing to approve contract with Tectara LLC for construction of a single-family home on a city-owned infill lot at 2527 Washington Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Russell, second by Sprank. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Housing and Community Development Director Alexis Steger is recommending City Council approve a contract with Tectara LLC for construction of a single-family home on a city-owned infill lot located at 2527 Washington Street. The city of Dubuque issued a request for bid to construct this home in April 2024, and two bids were received. The lowest bid was from Tectara LLC totaling $290,000 for the construction of this energy-efficient home. When construction is complete, the home will be sold to a low and moderate-income home buyer. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request Mayor and City Council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider approval of a contract for construction of a single-family home on a city-owned infill lot located at 2527 Washington Street in the city of Dubuque, Iowa. Do we have anyone here to address us on this item? Seeing no one? Anyone virtually?
No.
Thank you, Corey.
No input.
Thank you, Adrian. Back to the table then for any discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
I'm glad that, as one of our goals is, of course, is more housing and such. So I'm very happy that this city lot's being repurposed. So I'm definitely in support of this and looking forward to seeing what the new house will look like in my neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Sprank. Mr. Resnick, I saw your hand go up.
Yes, thank you. Could you tell me the funding source of $290,000?
Ms. Alexis. Go ahead, Alexis.
The funding source is Housing TIF. So that is the, set aside the 38% of Housing TIF districts that must go to low to moderate income properties and to provide low to moderate income housing for residents that meet that requirement.
I see. Thank you. And so, $290,000, could you tell me what the, what the median house is worth on, on 2,700, 2,500 block of Washington? Is it close to that?
What, I'm sorry, what house is that one?
Well, I mean, the house that's being built. Is that, is that about the average price of a house on 2,500 block of Washington?
Oh, for market rate, as if you were to sell it? Is that the, is that the question, Councilman Resnick?
Well, I guess. I mean, I mean, are, are we going to get our money back from this housing, spending the money on this?
Okay. Yeah, no. So that is actually why the city under, does this undertaking, is that it is not something that can be built and remain affordable in then, in that neighborhood. So we will not be selling the house for the 290 in which this contract is. At this point, that is not affordable with a mortgage with the rates as they are today. So as soon as it is finished, we do a calculation based on interest rates for a mortgage to make sure that the monthly payment is affordable for a low-modern income person.
I see. So what's, what do you estimate?
Currently, we're selling, so depending on, you know, a number of bedrooms, but currently we're selling three bedrooms for about $200,000. I think we dropped that to about $190 on the last sale, because the interest rates were higher at that time.
So it's about $190,000 that you think you might be able to get for this?
Correct. And in this case, this is an energy-efficient home. Utilities are part of that calculation, and we usually just do a general calculation for utilities. But this one will have a contribution of utilities to it. So they may be lower in which the sale price may reflect that. We have not done that calculation yet. We have to wait for the, the home to be finished and in place before we do that.
I see. And lastly, is this pretty typical, that we use Housing TIF to do this kind of situation where we build a nice place, and then we sell it for what the going rate, especially if it's the low to moderate income range?
Sure. So, and actually, we, I forgot we did this. We switched it to program income from the Housing Trust Fund. So I apologize. We use, sometimes use program income that comes in from the Housing Trust Fund for infill lots. Same process, they have to be low to moderate income. So that Housing TIF, no, we do not use, or Housing, we do not use very often for infill. It is often used for rehab and first-time homebuyer programs. But we have so much program income to spend that we did switch it from Housing TIF to that program income, so that we could close out one of our older Housing Trust Fund years.
I see. I guess I don't, didn't know that there was a program income, and that we have to sell it, we have to use it. We don't have to use it before a certain time, right? It's still there?
It's still there, but we cannot, we have to utilize the funds and close the fund from which we're spending. So as we keep moving forward, that program income does grow, and we do get to keep it until the Housing Trust Fund, basically, we no longer get. And it's a yearly application. So we just want to always make sure that we're keeping up and spending that program income.
Well, I appreciate your answers. Mr. Mayor, I think that, I mean, is this the highest use for this? It might be. I would, I would love to hear some conversation that this is the highest use of this, that we know we're going to lose $100,000 on this for a good cause. It's going to be, you know, something nice in the neighborhood, and it'll be a great house for somebody. So I'd be open to, you know, persuasion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Let's go to Ms. Wethel first, because Mr. Sprank, I believe you already jumped in, so I'll come back to you though. Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Wethel.
Alexis, just so that I have an understanding. So for instance, when we have a new housing development, and there is no units within that development that are low to moderate income, a percentage of that then is meant for properties such as this, right? Is that kind of?
Correct.
Okay. So the whole idea is that some units that are built in our city that we give TIF to, we know will not be low to moderate income. But we know that by doing the TIF for that project, in the end, we are actually helping those who are low to moderate income, because they'll benefit from a project such as this, in which they could never afford to buy a home such as this. Is that correct?
Correct. That is correct. That is how Housing TIF works. And that is actually how each of the funds that we use for these projects works. There's a Housing Trust Fund, there's the Housing TIF funds, and there's CDBG, and all of those work for that same purpose, in which, you know, they, they must benefit low to moderate income, but they are coming from sources that have done, like, market-rate housing or loans for other things.
And so the best conversation I can think of is when we had folks come to us, we had the development in Millwork, in which there were a number of units being built. And there was conversation in the community about making sure that we're considering low to moderate income, even though there was concern that those types of units were not within this specific build-out. This is kind of in the neighborhood of that same area, granted not within the Millwork District, but we are keeping those dollars in the same region of our city. Is, is that an accurate way to look at it?
In this case, it is close to other market-rate developments that are going up in two different realms, towards the north end, and also, like you said, towards the Millwork District. And so, yes, it is keeping, you know, affordability where it was already affordable, but also bringing in new market rate. Thank you.
Yeah, let's, let's go back. Mr., you can wait? Okay, Mr. Jones.
Just got to say that when we established the Housing TIF incentives, this was exactly, I thought, what the council had in mind, was that the TIF not used on those projects, or a portion of the TIF generated by those projects, would not be used by those projects, but would be in the pot for low-to-moderate-income housing projects. The notion that, that the city should make money or break even on low-to-moderate-income projects is, is fallacious. The object of having that money is to be able to do things like this, to be able to make a home available to someone who otherwise couldn't get in the door, couldn't get in the door to homeownership. And the payback to the good of the community is that hopefully a family can acquire that home, grow and thrive there, and do all the things that families do in the community that, that bring a quality of life, and generates a future tax payers and future taxes, and, and all of the good things that come along with it. So, you know, we can't do very many of these, because, because it is a little pricey. But here's a, a neighborhood that has been, in many people's view, long neglected, and not seeing new nice things. And here's an opportunity for a new nice home in a, in a improving neighborhood that a lot of people live in. And I'm sure they'll welcome some more neighbors. And I'm sure this is going to be a great opportunity for hopefully a young family to come into and, and, and begin to thrive. That's what we're trying to do with these incentives, is just give people a step up towards self-sufficiency and, and a better life. So that's my two cents.
Thanks, Mr. Jones. Ms. Farber.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask for clarification. Alexis, the document says that this fund is financed by the local Housing Trust Fund dollars from the Iowa Finance Authority. So could you explain that relationship and what these funds are really earmarked for, and if this is just part of that program, or is it something different? Thank you.
Yeah, and that is part of the program. We're allocated, well, we apply for funds yearly for the Housing Trust Fund. Because we supply grants, such as first-time homebuyer down payment grants, as well as the rehab grants, those are loans that are paid back. And so when they pay it back, there's program income. That program income is meant to be spent for same purposes of supplying low-to-modern income housing to residents. So it does not, it has to be within specific areas, unless they're under 30%. And the Washington neighborhood, that 2,500 block that we are working on, is within those boundaries in which we can do that. You target specific areas with the Housing Trust Fund. And then those, those funds, like I said, kind of revolving funds, because there's program income that comes with that.
Okay. And does this tie into our TIF funds directly, or is this just a different pool of funds that support this program?
So we, we utilize TIF funds to do the same work and take, so there was a home down. So we've been using those funds to help with this project. So I think, if the council remembers, quite a few months ago, that building that was there crumbled, and the foundation became poor, and we had to take that down. So we use Housing TIF in conjunction with the Housing Trust Fund to make sure that we can fund that full project.
Okay. Well, thank you for the hybrid. Appreciate it.
Got it.
Mr. Sprank.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alexis, will the, can you tell me more about what this house might look like? Like square footage? You mentioned three bedrooms. Will it have a garage? Just trying to get an idea.
So, kind of, yes. And no, I can't explain all of it, because we are allowing the builder to have some flexibility to get that energy efficiency and the most efficient building methods, so that it can be, the cost can be what it is, 290, instead of more, which is, when we first went out for RFP, it actually came back as a higher cost. So we're allowing them to work on different layouts, and that will change throughout. We always aim for three bedrooms. That's one that we have a hard time filling in the city of Dubuque. And so that's what we are drawing up, is a three-bedroom, where you have the living room, kitchen. And it's going to fit the neighborhood, so it was a two-story. That's what would remain.
Okay. All right. And we don't know about a garage. So possibly no garage is what you're thinking?
So the, there is not currently a garage planned. I don't believe that will ever be on the specs, because there is an alley. And so there's access for, what we usually do with that is a cement pad for parking.
Okay. The reason I ask is, so I'm, this house is, this new potential house could be like a block from my house. My house is worth $190,000 to $200,000 by any realtor that knocks on my door. I have spent a lot on my house, modernizing it, because it was built in 1915. I have replaced windows, the roof, the electrical, a kitchen, two bathrooms. So I have spent a lot on my old house in my old neighborhood. So I don't, I can see why spending as much of this to build a nice house in a very tight lot is, is the cost that this quotes came back at. And so I'm not surprised that it's nearly $190,000, because to build a house anywhere caught that's about this, a three-bedroom-ish, I'm guessing maybe it's a little, like, maybe 1,200 square feet, is going to cost. I'm guessing maybe it's a little like maybe 1,200 square feet, is going to cost you about this much. So I'm not surprised at the cost. And that doesn't even include a garage. So if it had a garage, it'd probably be even more. So I am fully supportive of this. I know it's kind of weird in my neighborhood, but I'm, I'd look forward to seeing a nice new house in my neighborhood. So, thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Russell.
Thank you. I'm excited to, to have this opportunity to invest in our North End. It makes me think of a couple of meetings ago where a resident came and said she felt that her neighborhood was not being, that we weren't investing in the North End and that we had forgotten about them. So I hope this kind of a project will help the neighbors see that we are investing. And I know I would like to live next to a nice home in my neighborhood. Also, having the opportunity for some family to build wealth. This is a great, a great start. And also the fact that it's going to be energy efficiency. So they're not, they're going to have a long-term help with their energy bills. So I think it sounds like a win-win investment.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Any others? Well, for my part, I, I generally agree with most of the comments I've heard here. I think what excites me the most about this is we're, we're not just, we're not just building a house. We're combining that with our sustainability efforts as a city too. I mean, we're thinking about this from a sustainability standpoint, an equity standpoint. You know, Mr. Sprank, to your point, I mean, the, the fact that it costs so much to be able to make older homes energy efficient, it's, it, energy efficient is, is just a challenge. It's, it's something that's a part of who we are in Dubuque because we have a lot of these older places, but it's something that we, I mean, we've created a program to be able to help people through that who don't have the, the financial ability to do that as easily themselves. So to be able to have a home like this that's, that's built in this way, not just be a nicer new home, but also an energy efficient one, I think is a really important combination of a lot of the different things that we're doing. So I, I definitely do support this. I'm, I'm really excited about us doing this and trying to replicate it again down the line, I think. And, and Ms. Russell, to your point, to be able to invest in the North End in this way, exactly right. I mean, that's exactly right. I, I'd like to see us continue to do that. Okay. Motion here is to receive and file and adopt this resolution. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
No.
Motion passes six to one.
Public hearing number six is well number seven rehabilitation project 2024, Phase Two Public Hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Move to receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Jones, second by Farber. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Water Department Director Christopher Lester is recommending City Council adopt the resolution approving the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost of $540,000 for the well number seven rehabilitation project 2024, Phase Two. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request Mayor and City Council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider approval of plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the well number seven rehabilitation project, Phase Two. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one, anyone virtually?
No.
Thank you.
No input.
Thank you very much. Back to the table then for any discussion. Okay. Seeing none, hearing none. Motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Next is public input. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the City Council on the action items on the agenda or on matters under the control of the City Council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and state your name and address when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the City Council can take no formal action on comments given during public input or that do not relate to the action items on the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. I'm not seeing anyone here in chambers for public input this evening, I don't believe. Do we have anyone virtually?
No.
Okay, anything from the city clerk's office? All right, thank you very much. Well, seeing no public input, we will move on to action items, please.
Action item number one is proposed additional housing development incentive.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and approve.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Russell, second by Sprank. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending City Council approval of an additional incentive, incentive to facilitate low and moderate income housing development outside of the greater downtown urban renewal area. In 2022, the Greater Dubuque Development Corporation conducted a housing needs study. The study showed that the city of Dubuque could be short approximately 1,100 housing units by 2030. September 2022, the City Council approved a slate of housing incentives that took into consideration such factors as whether a project was located in an existing urban revitalization district or a new one, and whether the project was creating market rate or affordable units. Currently, a new affordable multi-family housing development outside of the greater downtown urban renewal area is only eligible to receive the same 10-year tax incentive as multifamily market rate housing developments. This has not recognized the financing complexities inherent to affordable housing development. It does not support the city efforts to avoid concentrating all low and moderate income housing development in one area of the community. The proposed additional housing development incentive would allow low and moderate income housing development outside of the greater downtown urban renewal area to be eligible for the choice between 10 years of abatement, followed by five years of tax increment financing, or 15 years of tax increment financing. This incentive would only be available to residential developments where at least 60% of the units are low and moderate income housing. This 60% requirement is in keeping with low-income housing tax credit requirements and will allow the projects to remain competitive for those state and federal incentives. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request Mayor and City Council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? Mr. Reddick.
Thank you very much. Is the, Mr. Van Milligan, is the 60% based on the number of units or this square footage of, or how is that 60% calculated?
I think it's number of units, but we're going to see if Alexis Steger is still on the line.
She's not.
She's not. So Jill? It's number of units, yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Others? Well, Jill and, and Mike and everybody involved with this, this is a great catch. You know, I don't think I fully recognize the fact that we had this, this hole in this process that we were trying to improve here. So the, the fact that we have you paying so close attention to this and being able to say that, you know, this is a, a barrier to development outside of the downtown urban renewal district is, is really important. And I'm, I'm very thankful that you brought it in front of us. I think this council's made it pretty clear that we want to do everything we possibly can to push housing development forward. We have seen a lot of great success. We still don't have as many buildings up and standing as we would like to see. So I think anything else we can do to continue to push this, I think is really important. So I really appreciate the work on this. I'm looking forward to voting for it. Okay. Well, motion here is to receive and file and approve. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number two is 2024 Police Department Kalia accreditation acceptance.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
I move that we receive and file and hear the presentation.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Farber, second by Sprank. So am I going straight to you first, Mike? All right, stick, straight to Chief Jensen.
Maybe. Got it. Maybe. That's not it.
We have Cory coming to the rescue.
What did I do? I can. It's improvised speaking tonight. There it goes. Perfect. Cory to the rescue, right. So good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. It's with great pleasure I get to announce that in July, we were awarded our 10th Kalia accreditation. Just give you kind of a brief presentation of why it's important and stuff. I talk about it every year at Budget. I will say that this was not possible. So Corporal Chris Gurrell's our accreditation manager. This is not possible without the work he does. I mean, this is day in and day out. So we had no issues whatsoever, defended it, sat before the council or the committee, and they had no issues to address with us. So what do these numbers mean? So first, Kalia stands for Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. Never hear it other than Kalia. 1993, that's the first year we were accredited as a police department. We were the first one in the state of Iowa. And right now, there's still only 12 agencies in the state of Iowa that are Kalia accredited. 10. It's our 10th time to be re-accredited. Not a lot of agencies that were there had more than 10. So a lot of them are just in their second or third. 484, that's the amount of standards that they look at in a four-year cycle. So every four years, they look at all 484. Yearly, they look at approximately one-fourth of that, sign off on it, and then in year four, we have an onsite Kalia assessor that comes onsite for a few days, goes through everything, interviews people, actually get eyes on the stuff that we're reporting to them to make sure we're essentially not lying to them about what we're doing. So they went through all 484 and again, we passed those with no problems. Got just a brief video of what Kalia is, if maybe it's going to load. Come on. It's not loading up. Let me just bypass that one and go to the next one, since that don't want to go. Maybe. There we go. So essentially, this is the visual of what the video is going to tell you anyway. So this is just kind of the pieces of the puzzle. Why is Kalia important for an agency to have? I can tell you in 2020, when everything was being looked at, you know, we sat before the council here and a lot of the things that you were asking of us, we already had in policy or just needed a tweak because we were accredited. It honestly made it simple. But you look, increased community advocacy. We have a portal that's open 24/7 on our website. The community can comment on, on how we're doing as a police department. This year, we didn't, do we have seven total, Chris? Comments in the whole time. Some of them are just standard complaints and not really anything about how we're doing. But that's, that's one of them. Part of that is that all our policies are public. You can see them. You can see what they are. And, and as it says here, they start with the integrity, the transparency, and then the accountability on it. Because again, we have an outside agency looking at these yearly. The staunch support from government officials, I mean, you obviously support us in this. You fund it every year for us and have for a long, long time. But if you look at just beyond this, that's where different, the bigger groups, International Association, Chiefs of Police, the National Sheriff's Association, National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives, all support this. It's a standard that's, it's across the nation. Stronger against civil lawsuits, just simply we have a policy on things. I mean, that's not us just winging it. They get, that gets part of that. Reduced risk and liability exposure, obviously, just goes without saying, kind of along the same lines. And then the greater accountability within the agency. And part of that is because we do have standards that you're held to. We do have 484 standards that the officers are within that. But it also gives us consistent and fair guidelines to be able to follow within an organization. And at that, just thank you for all the support. Again, like I said, I talk about it every year, so don't want to talk about a whole lot, but... Any questions?
Well, Chief, first of all, congratulations. Thank you very much for the work that you do. Corporal, thank you too. Yeah, you talk about it every year, but it is really important. I mean, it's, there's a reason that we keep doing this. There's a reason we staff it. There's a reason that you, that you go through the 400, I'm just going to say plus, you know, the standards that you have to follow. And, and it shows. It shows in the work that you do. And, and I think, you know, I had the opportunity to speak with the reviewers when they came here. They said the same thing to me, is that it shows and that you're, you're paying attention, you take this to heart. You, you don't just do this, you live it. And, and I really do appreciate that as a, as a resident of this city, but then also in this, in this role that we get to play here.
Yeah, and, and the level we're at is advanced law enforcement. And so there's a basic law enforcement. And we saw a number of agencies actually backing off of the advanced, which is, it's a lot of work, but I can't imagine backing off of that. I mean, it is having the standards and having that ability to look at everything we do, essentially under a microscope.
Yeah. And thank you for keeping those standards high. I think it's really important. Okay, Ms. Farber.
Just a quick question. In terms of the department conversations with the people that come in from the agency, does that, is it across all of your departments? Or does Chris just handle it?
No, they, they ask to interview on certain topics. So this time, we had like a use of force instructor they wanted to talk to, different commanders, different divisions. They wander around our building and then look and just, you know, take in the site and then talk to people as they come across it. But they have some very specific agenda, parts that there's, they go through it that they want to focus on.
Well, that's great to have that collaboration and that commitment from the departments as well. So again, thank you and congratulations.
Okay. All right. Chief, thank you very much for being here to present that to us today. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Congratulations again. All right, motion here is to receive and file and hear that presentation. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number three is work session request, Central Avenue and White Street Corridor traffic study.
Mayor, I have motioned that we receive and file. And I guess set the work session request for that date and time.
Thank you.
Second.
Got a motion by Sprank, second by Russell. Oh, Ms. Farber.
Just wondering why this is not on a night that we have a council meeting? This is a separate night. Could it not be scheduled for one of the two September meetings?
The intent, first of all, I think it'll be the length of the work session was one of the issues. But I also think the fact that this is, will be the earliest that they would be ready for a work session. The only open night is Tuesday, September 3, and they're not ready for that. Well, actually, that's the reason it's open, is they were going to be that night, is my recollection, but they won't be ready.
Thank you.
All right. Motion here is to receive and file, schedule work session. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number four is work session request, smart parking and mobility management plan.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and set the work session for October 7 at 5:30.
Second. Motion by Russell, second by Jones. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number five is water distribution crew employee feature video.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Jones, move to receive and file and watch the video.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Jones, second by Farber. We can roll the video, please, Eric.
I like working here. They know it. My shift starts at 7 o'clock. I'm usually here quarter after 6. Hi, I'm Marty and I work for the Water Distribution Center, City of Dubuque. I started in 2017. Previously, I worked for a contractor for 25-plus years. As a water distribution maintenance worker, our job consists of fixing main breaks, going out, flushing hydrants in the spring and fall, turning valves, doing water main taps, filling water mains, getting safe samples. There's always something. There's always water running somewhere. It's different every day. It's not an easy job some days. You got to take the good and the bad, but there's more good. And it's a place where everybody helps everybody. It's part of the job. My favorite part is when we have a water main break. When I get that call, I want to get the water out before it wrecks everything. Every time you dig in the ground, you're always going to see something different. So you want to be there as quick as you can. We make it happen. You have to have water. But it's all hours of the night, all holidays, it's every day of the week, whether it's raining, whether it's snowing, whether it's hot, whether it's cold. I remember last year Thanksgiving, we got called out for a main break. You have to have water. But it's all hours of the night, all holidays, it's, you know, every day of the week, whether it's raining, whether it's snowing, whether it's hot, whether it's cold. I remember last year Thanksgiving, we got called out for a main break. You know, everybody's sitting at their house doing Thanksgiving dinner, and they have no water. Once they see you out there getting the water back on, they're just thrilled. And then when you get it back on, they come out, they appreciate it. We work together good. Everybody knows their part. Everybody knows what's going on. Everybody knows what, what to grab and what, what to do. It's like a smoother run machine. It's more than a job. We all enjoy it. It's just like another family. I'm glad to be here.
That was a great video. I love the fact that he, he's so excited to do that work that looks, every time you see somebody doing that work, I always think to myself, ah, poor guys have to do that right now, you know? It's so tough to have to do that. But it's great to know that there's an excitement and a satisfaction with doing those things that are so essentially important for what we all need in, in the city. So I thank you very much, Marty, and everybody who works there for the, for the water crew. All right. Well, motion here was to receive and file and watch that video. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number six is City Life and Marshallese video.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and watch another great video.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Russell, second by Wethel. Go ahead, Eric.
[speaking Spanish]
That was a great video. I love the fact that he, he's so excited to do that work that looks, every time you see somebody doing that work, I always think to myself, ah, poor guys have to do that right now, you know? It's so tough to have to do that. But it's great to know that there's an excitement and a satisfaction with doing those things that are so essentially important for what we all need in, in the city. So I thank you very much, Marty, and everybody who works there for the, for the water crew. All right. Well, motion here was to receive and file and watch that video. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number six is City Life and Marshallese video.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and watch another great video.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Russell, second by Wethel. Go ahead, Eric.
[speaking Spanish]
That was a great video. I love the fact that he, he's so excited to do that work that looks, every time you see somebody doing that work, I always think to myself, ah, poor guys have to do that right now, you know? It's so tough to have to do that. But it's great to know that there's an excitement and a satisfaction with doing those things that are so essentially important for what we all need in, in the city. So I thank you very much, Marty, and everybody who works there for the, for the water crew. All right. Well, motion here was to receive and file and watch that video. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number six is City Life and Marshallese video.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and watch another great video.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Russell, second by Wethel. Go ahead, Eric.
[speaking Spanish]
That was a great one. So this is our first time doing City Life and Marshallese, correct? That's, yeah, is the first time that we're doing, yeah, we've got City Life in Spanish now, and we're gonna have City Life and Marshallese. I sincerely appreciate that we're doing this for our residents who, those are their, their native languages, and excited to meet with this group when they come in. It's gonna be a lot of fun, I know, so I'm really looking forward to it. All right. Motion here, receive and file, watch that video. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. All right. Any reports we have before we spend two more nights together?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Jones?
Quite a few of us got to participate in the congressional staffers' visits last, last week, maybe this, you know, last week.